Very good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. I am Dr. Kenneth Harris, the Chair of this committee, and thank you for joining us tonight. Without further ado, Ms. Barton, do you mind calling the role?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Present.
This is Madeline LaSalle Frazier.
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller. Dr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. David Murray. Ms. Lolita Walker.
I'm here. Ms. Barton, you're coming across really low on my side. I don't know if it's just my system. Is she coming across low to you all?
Yes.
Oh, okay, me as well. Okay, heads up.
Come up as hard as I can get it.
Is this any better?
Yes.
It is. Thank you, Ms. Barton. Thank you very much. And again, good evening to administrative staff, board office staff, and our guests joining us here tonight. First on our agenda, I'd like to adopt the meeting agenda for the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second, or can I have a second? Or I can second, in a second, I can second, I'll second it. It's been moved to second day, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, any opposed? Saying none, the motion passes. All right, moving on to item one point four. And I don't think I acknowledged you, Chair Mickens Murray, but thank you for joining us tonight. And item one point four will be the approval of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
So moved.
All right, I'll second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Um, moving on to item two, public comment. We have no registered public comment speakers tonight or labor partner scheduled to speak, so we'll move on to item three point zero. Tonight, we'll be discussing the year-end closeout process from the financial side. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Lisa Howell, our acting CFO. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Um, and thank you for that. All right, good evening, everyone. We will step into our year-end close process. As you can imagine, trying to close down a school system of our size, a two-point-six-billion-dollar budget, over two-hundred schools, over fifty-five different functional areas underneath the central offices, and then all the multiple departments that cascade underneath that. It's a major coordinated effort to pull everything down slowly, but to also make sure that we allow that the necessary operations that need to continue through the end of the fiscal year have enough time to do that, balanced with closing the books. So we will step into the coordinated effort to help to close the school system down. So going to the second slide. So there's a primary area in the way in which we encumber funds for the school system is through our procurement system. I have it abbreviated here, but it's the I procurement self-service purchasing system, which is a module within Oracle, which is our and that is the way in which the majority of our expenditures are actually processed. The deadline for the requisitions across the school system is April twenty-eighth of this year, so just in a week or so. That includes everything except for our grants and capital programs, which have a little bit more time. But that includes our summer school, so lots of planning that's necessary in order to ensure that we have those requisitions captured, as well as any of our internal warehouse transactions in which schools, central offices make requests to purchase items from the central warehouse that are procured on behalf of the school system. So all that activity must be submitted by the requisitioner, approved by the fiscal authority, and electronically submitted to the purchasing department by the dates. So not starting it on April twenty-eighth, it needs to make it through the entirety of the approval process. I'm kind of stepping into that process area a little bit. But that is a hard and fast deadline, so it's important that the requisitioner allows enough time for the request to make its way all the way through the procurement process, including their supervisor or whoever is the fiscal authority. If they might, you know, be unavailable for a certain period of time, to allow for those activities to make it all the way through. And then grants and capital programs have a little bit more time. Their deadline is May twenty-sixth. For our grants, they're a little bit different than our general operations, because we have grants that have different terms that may not necessarily align with our fiscal year-end. So it's important for the requisitioners to understand that even though their grant may not be ending June thirty of twenty twenty-three, we still have to follow the guidelines associated with closing out the year. So if a requisition was initiated in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so sometime July one, twenty twenty-two or later, that requisition will need to be, you know, they'll have time to get that submitted and you know, approved and have the purchase order set up. But it's important that even if the grant does not end on June thirtieth, that they have a limited amount of time to have those purchase orders, those encumbrances, liquidated, and that means that they have to be able to have the invoices processed and paid by June thirtieth, oh, excuse me, by September thirtieth. So they have a, you know, sort of a ninety-day window to get those captured, so they will be included and encumbered as part of the year-end process. But they do have to have those liquidated by the end of September, even if the grant has a term that goes beyond that date. If the purchase order is not liquidated by the end of September, purchasing department will be canceling those purchase orders, and they will have to be reestablished in fiscal year twenty twenty-four using fiscal year twenty twenty-four funds if the grant is still available. So it's important for the grants to kind of understand that timeline. And then, as we get into some of our other activities, we have the print shop request, so they are responsible for doing print jobs across the system. They also have until May twenty-sixth. But it's important that there is enough time to allow for the job to be completed by June second, because there is a process that has to be done in order to charge back those activities to the requesting department. So when the request is being provided to the print shop for the job, they need to ensure that the job can be completed by June second, and if not, they'll have to readjust the timeline for that. The last and final thing that we have to support this process is that each of the organizations will have the ability to do budget adjustment requests through May thirty-first. So if they need to make a purchase and the funds are not aligned in the right category and the right expense code category, they will be able to go in and initiate their own budget adjustment requests, assuming it follows our guidelines and it's within the allowable functional categories, it's within the dollar threshold, that they will have the ability to move funds around while they're making it through this procurement process, whether it's through April twenty-eighth or through the end of May. Throughout this time, all of the departments, as I referenced grants a little bit, but all the departments should be working towards, once their purchase orders have been established, making sure that their invoices are paid against those purchase orders that have been set up. And they have until July third to get those submitted to through the process against those outstanding purchase orders. It is important to note that for the items that are going through this requisition process, that they relate to fiscal year twenty twenty-three operations. What that means is we need to ensure that the goods and the services are going to be received or rendered in this fiscal year. So you can't set up a requisition for a purchase order for goods that are going to show up on July eighteenth. It has to be within this fiscal year. And again, if that's not going to be the case, those purchase orders will have to be canceled. So all those efforts work towards the closing of the year-end process. Next slide, please. So we talked a little bit about the majority of the expenditures that come through the procurement cycle. We also have the process for printing as well. Finally, we have expenses that are processed through our I expense reimbursement for employee reimbursements. And we also have some vendors that receive payments through a disbursement authority. Those deadlines are based on sort of a rolling schedule, as you see outlined below. So depending on when the cost was incurred, they have, you know, staged due dates throughout the closed process. So for the majority of the costs that have been incurred from the beginning of the fiscal year, July one through April, they have until May to get those items submitted. For the items that have then subsequently been incurred in the month of May, they have until June. If they've been incurred in June, they have until July third. And then, of course, you see for food and nutrition services, you know, they have an opportunity through July fifth to have their activities submitted and processed through that. Again, if the items relate to fiscal year twenty-four activities, they will be rejected and they will not be processed. So it's important to ensure that it relates to goods and services procured and and received by the appropriate deadlines to be included in fiscal year twenty twenty-four expenditures. The only other thing that I will note is that we do understand and realize that we are a large school system, and there will certainly be exceptions that may arise that will require requisition to be established at these deadlines. To the extent that that is the case, and it really is a rare exception, it does not happen. When you consider the volume of activity that we have coming through, the percentage is really low. But those requests do require approval by the division chief, by the purchasing department, by the chief financial officer, and then finally by the chief executive officer. So there's several layers of review and approval that's required for those exceptions. And it is meant to be an exception process. So those are thoroughly reviewed to determine if the exception is warranted and justified before we actually allow the procurement process to be reopened temporarily for that requisition to be initiated outside of the deadlines established here. Finally, on the last slide is just some guidelines on how to get to the full bulletin that is posted on the financial services website. If you go to the last slide here. It's just provides some, well, I'll just talk through it. It provides some directions on if you go to our website under financial services, where we have the full bulletin posted. I really just put there's a lot of additional information captured in the bulletin. And so I'm certainly encouraged for those who are interested that they can go into more details by accessing that bulletin. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, my hand is up.
Doctor.
Yes. Uh, would you go back to that? Oh, will you finish that other slide? Is this the second where it says FY twenty-four expenses entered against FY twenty-four funds will be rejected? Is that correct? Should that be FY twenty twenty-three expenses entered against FY twenty twenty-four funds will be rejected? Is that?
Correct. Yeah, that actually is a typo there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so bringing that to your attention, had you finished, Ms. Ms., had you finished, Ms. Howell?
Yes, I finished with the present.
Okay. May I ask, Mr. Chair, may I ask, begin my questions?
The floor is yours.
Okay, the first thing I want to ask is when we have funds in the budget that have not been used up to this date, can we still use those funds? Uh, no, would you tell this, the committee, what happens when we have funds left over? Where do they go?
So as we get through the year-end close process, any remaining budget that is not spent in fiscal year twenty twenty-three will become part of the
Become part of what? I didn't hear that last part.
It will fall to the fund balance. And so those expenditures will not be available. They don't roll over to the following year's budget. So if they're not used in twenty twenty-three, they then become part of the fund balance. And within that fund balance, there's different categories where those expenditures will fall and reside. And we have already, we presented a plan previously that sort of outlined the details of what's included in the fund balance and the planned activities for that. But generally speaking, the funds are use or lose them for the current fiscal year. So that is one of the reasons why we make a huge push to ensure that as departments develop and plan their budgets for the year, they're monitoring their spend throughout the year, and they're ensuring that they allow enough time at the end of the fiscal year to be able to utilize those funds, because they will not roll over for them to have access to in the following fiscal year, because we only have budget authority for the fiscal year in which we are in.
So then, my question is, if in fact, the board has invoices that have not been paid and are there, but well, I'll just be transparent about where I'm going with this. The board has some outstanding legal fees that are now, that the state has literally mandated that the board pays. And these invoices have been submitted back from February. They've been submitted up during this, this year and this fiscal period, okay? But they have not been paid. So given that there may be funds in this current fiscal budget, would it be prudent to go on and pay off those invoices before you took the chart off the closing date? That's one of my questions. And let's say that the board has, I haven't, I don't have it in front of me, but you would be able to pull it up, Ms. Howell. The balance in the line item that the board has for legal services, because these are the invoices I'm referencing. In that line item, if there is sufficient funds, is there any way that I mean, there is a way, but I think the the committee needs to be made aware of the fact that these need to be paid out of or should be paid out of the twenty-two, twenty-three, or this fiscal twenty-three budget. Am I correct in that?
Yes, so if the services were rendered in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, they should be paid out of the twenty twenty-three budget. There is a period of time in which outstanding invoices can be accrued if we know that we have the invoice in hand. And then the payments can be made against those approvals. But again, there's a limited amount of time in which that approval can remain on the books. So it is important that those invoices are settled against the purchase order. I'm assuming the purchase order was established for these legal services. I don't have the details of that in front of me, and we can certainly talk about that offline a little bit more detail, but assuming the purchase orders were established and the funds have been encumbered, you now want to be able to ensure that the invoices are paid against the outstanding encumbrance.
Okay. And my second question then is, in that particular line item, should there not be sufficient funds to pay off the invoices, the twenty twenty-three invoices that are outstanding? We, we did it before for, uh, last year, I remember the, the budget adjustment request to move funds around. There are other categories or line items that will probably, as you say, will go into, I call it the dark hole or the black hole, because there's nothing we will be able to do with it once the fiscal year ends. So would we be able to do that? Or, well, I know we can do it. I'd just like for this committee to be aware of it, because everyone on the committee may not have that. We have new people. Mr., I mean, Dr. Harris was here last year, but I don't know whether he was aware of how that was handled, because we had some service, I can't remember what the services were, but we had to move money. Oh, I know it was for Mr. Nussbaum, I believe, whoever it was for, but the point is that we didn't have enough in that category to pay, and so we had to request from procurement or, you know, the budget adjustment request.
Yeah, the way that it's set up is that within every cost center, the person who has fiscal responsibility has the ability to realign their budget within the correct functional category, but they can realign their funds to a different cost string. And so if you have money available in supplies, as an example, that has not been spent, and you want to realign that to a different sub-object, say contractual services or other expenses, that can be done by the requesting department through that deadline that I mentioned before, that is open through the end of May, to allow each department to support requisitions that they may be setting up to make sure that if they don't have the budget in the line item currently, they can do their own bar adjustment, budget alignment adjustment, to be able to move those funds to the right cost string.
Okay, and thank you, you've been very clear on that. The last question is then given that the legislature just passed a bill that literally almost mandates the board to pay certain legal fees, can we still, can, yeah, can we still submit those invoices even though the law has not been activated? I mean, the governor can either sign it in thirty days, or if he doesn't sign it and doesn't veto, it becomes law anyway. So would it be permissible for this board to submit those invoices with the understanding that we want that, that those funds to come out of the twenty-three budget, to come out of the twenty-three budget, because there are sufficient funds or funds that, well, there's, let's say there are sufficient funds. And if additional funds need to be transferred, we could still do that and take the funding from the twenty-three fiscal fiscal year, because you just, it said, you said that if we don't use this money, I mean, if we don't submit these invoices by a certain date and time that are from twenty-two, twenty-three, then they just we will not be able to pay them against the twenty-four. Am I correct?
No, the invoices are not submitted against the outstanding purchase order by the deadlines established or against the accrual that may have been established, depending on the scenario. If it's not submitted before those different deadlines, and most importantly, by the time we close the books for the year, then the invoice can still be paid. It would just go against the following year's budget.
So you're, well, then that, that answers my question. It still can be, it will go against the twenty-four?
It will go against the twenty-four budget.
Okay, but it will still get paid?
It'll get paid.
Okay.
It'll come out of the budget.
I'm just making clarification, but I, you know, my being prudent in fiscal responsibility, I would just think that rather than going to our new money, if we've got old money or current money to use, rather than let, let that money go into a dark hole, we could submit those documents with the understanding that by the timeline on here, which I, I, I see something for food care and all that, I mean, you get, you've even given July dates, but hopefully this this will, this bill will be signed by the governor within the next within the next month. So I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible. Okay, thank you, Ms. Howell. You did a great job.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. I'll go over to Ms. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Dr. Harris, this is for you for consideration as we move forward, particularly for board members. And I'm wondering if you think it prudent for us to, given these dates, I know that board members have already received the email that say, hey, these dates are here, but I'm wondering if we could ask the board office to send out after they close the books in time for May twelfth, to each board member what their balances are. That would be amazing. That means that our staff would need to go ahead, the ask of the Ms. Dent in the staff office is for them to go ahead, put in all of the expenses that they have to date, so that we can make sure we see that in time for May twelfth, which we see on the screen right here, so that we, board members, don't end up being in the cycle that Ms. Howell just told us that we don't want to be in. So that's just to you for consideration.
Well, thank you.
Do you understand the question?
I do, I do. I think that we, I do, I do think we get an update. I don't know if it's
We do.
Yeah.
We get a reconciliation every month, but I can tell you from knowing is that sometimes all of our expenses aren't in that reconciliation, right? It's because everybody has, our staff has so many things to do. So we get a reconciliation, but some of those balances could look like zero, although they're not. So what my ask is, is if, and if you don't want to take it on, it's okay, because I'm gonna send it for my stuff, is to Ms. Dent to say, hey, to your staff, if you can have, ensure that they can expedite or make sure that they can prioritize all of the receipts that they have to date for every board member, so that when they get the reconciliation that closes out, that we know exactly where we stand for each one. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, understood. Ms. Winston, did you have something to add to that?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harris. Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. And so that is a responsibility that comes out of the Internal Audit Office. Monthly, we do send those reconciliations and reporting to every board members, but certainly we'll take extra care in these last closeout months to make sure that we have all of the transactions, the reporting that we do are pretty much cover everything that we are made aware of, and we usually pull those reports from our own financial reporting. We will follow up on what the board office, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Winston, just real quick, just so, because I might not have asked it right. The concern is not what you're doing on your side. I think you guys are doing amazing. The question honestly is because of the workload of our staff, I think that sometimes they just don't have enough time to put in all of the the, the receipts. So it's not a you question that I have. I think your processes are outstanding. The question honestly is for the staff to make sure and prioritize that they're putting it in, so that you only can pull what you have. Right? And so the question really wasn't directed at you, but I appreciate the work that you're doing. And listen, because it's getting a little confusing, I am happy to reach out. So I will take that for me specifically, because that's a question that I want to make sure that I'm going to up and up, because I'm not falling in the process of needing to come back and ask for approvals. Okay, that's it.
No, we appreciate it. I was gonna say, I don't think that, I don't think it's, it's something, I mean, it is something for consideration for me, but I think at the root of it, it could be just a request from Ms. Dent to say, hey, we'd like to see this specifically in our last report, and it doesn't need to be like a recommendation from the committee or me or anything. And I think Ms. Dent's gonna be happy to do it. So let's, let's take that offline. Is that, is that all your questions, Ms. Walker? Yep, okay. Ms. Mickens, Mary.
Thank you. A suggestion to Ms. Howell, the House Bill ten seventy-nine, if you would have your people pull that bill and have Ms. Tammy Turner explain the authority line that the Senate put in that bill, and the authority to pay the fees does not start until the governor signs that bill effective July one. So that we can keep clear of when the money is really authorized to come out and be paid. So that we can keep clear of when the money is really authorized to come out and be paid. So I, I want to make sure that there's no confusion around that piece.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell, for your presentation. You can stop sharing for me, Mia. Um, and I don't see any other hands up. So we will move right along again. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell. We'll move on now to uh Blueprint Schools update. I have the pleasure of turning the floor over to Dr. Coleman, uh, who will be introducing our speaker for tonight. So, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you so much and good evening, Board Chair, Board Committee Chair Harris, uh, Board Members and Community Stakeholders. My name is Shirazka Coleman, Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services. On behalf of our Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Mark Fawcett, I have the opportunity to introduce. The Director of the Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development, Mr. Jason Washington. Mr. Washington is going to provide an important update on our progress towards completing our Phase One Blueprint Schools. In preparation for opening for students and staff in fall twenty twenty-three. The Blueprint Schools is one component of Prince George's County Public Schools' efforts to bring, to provide safe. And state-of-the-art learning environments for all students. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Washington.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman, and to um committee members. Uh, it's a pleasure to be back uh to provide an update on where we are. Um, as I have learned that I must do when I start these presentations, the schools are on time. Um, and so I, I, I don't hide, I don't want to hide the ball. Um, they are on time. Uh, the, the scheduled delivery dates. Um, are still unchanged. Uh, there's a lot of work that needs to happen. However, um, we um are not apprised of any issue that will impact uh the delivery of the schools. And the opening of schools this fall. And so um as we um start here, this is the, the cover page of what, once all of the schools are complete. Um, what their renderings will look like. Um, I got a question today about the, the, the panels. Um, the uh, the school paintings will begin um really within the next week. Um, starting at Hyattsville and I believe um Sonya Sotomayor. Um, and uh they all will be, uh, so it will just not be the white or the gray um that uh if you pass by the schools. Uh, they will start to take um uh shape here uh with, with the color components and accent panels uh over the next couple of weeks. Uh, to update everyone, um, again, the Blueprint Schools program uh is uh Prince George's County's. Uh, novel approach to addressing uh the deficiency of, 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 of seats. Um, quite frankly, and quality um assets uh for our students and, and to learn in and our teachers to teach in. Uh, and so Phase One uh was um a, a, a novel idea to bundle. Um, the delivery of uh six schools, uh Sonya Sotomayor uh Middle School, uh which is a new school along with Colin L. Powell. K eight Academy, which is a new school, and then Replacement Schools for Drew Freeman Middle School, Hyattsville Middle School. Kenmore Middle School and Walker Mill uh Middle School. And so uh this is a thirty-year agreement that we have. Uh, we're actually in the process of standing up that services um program. Uh, which basically means when we receive the school immediately. Uh, Honeywell will be on the clock to ensure that uh the systems and uh the program is maintained. Uh, as contractually obligated, or they will start um uh the deductions regime and, and removing. Uh, potential um uh revenue and money um payments uh from, from them as we go forward. So uh one of the broader things that I just kind of wanted to touch on, um, that we've gotten questions uh over the last few uh months. Uh, from um really school-based and, and curriculum in the community too is what exactly is going into the schools? Like, you know, we, we know it's a school, but what it, what does, what is going in that's different than just classrooms? Uh, and so uh across the program, uh, we have and will um provide uh the following. Uh, offerings in each of the schools. Um, so there will be steam labs in each of the schools. Uh, we, that steam lab curriculum will uh uh consist of uh laser printers, three D printers, uh etchers. Um, I think there are spray booths, um, is both wet and dry, uh, that will allow uh students to, you know, to, to collaborate. And to coordinate with science and math uh around uh steam technology um as we um move forward. Uh, uh, into the twenty-first century. Uh, there will be production studios uh that will allow for each school to produce. Uh, uh, their morning news or anything that they would like to do. Uh, um, school-based, so there won't be a need to broadcast out. You can literally be able to broadcast directly. Uh, from the production studio. Um, a unique feature of these schools are collaboration spaces. So if you walked into um the library, some of the new renovated libraries and seeing the soft seating. That will be um prominently displayed throughout the school. Um, we are looking at creating multiple learning modalities for students, so small groups, larger pull-out spaces. Uh, there are uh teacher resource rooms throughout the buildings as well. And so this is to really allow for our teachers to meet our students wherever they are. Uh, and so uh we are excited about that. Um, these uh, the, this, this soft seating is probably better than anything I had. Prior to uh, you know, having a real job in my apartment, so I'm, I'm excited uh that the students are able to, to, to have that. Um, also, but will, there will be a fully fitted out band studio. Uh, three, uh, three-sided mirrors, uh bars, uh spring-loaded flooring, uh drama studios. Um, the media centers are open uh with the idea of, of, of really casual seating. And to be able to pull a book, sit down and, and to uh, to, to read it. Uh, at, at one of the seats or taking it back to class. Uh, and so the whole idea is to create an open. Space that allows for uh the, the, the students to, you know, to experience being in school and, and daylighting. It's a lot of light into the buildings, uh, and there's just, you know, those things that, that we have felt. And that there is proven science that, you know, that, that helps students uh to, to excel. Um, and so also there will be wellness centers. Uh, the idea uh is uh to provide opportunities for. Uh, wellness activities for both teachers and students. So there will be uh treadmills and ellipticals. And workout equipment within the school uh that can be utilized both as part of the health curriculum, but also. Uh, for teachers after school and before school uh to, to exercise. Um, and uh, there will be a community-based wellness clinic in each school. Um, that will be run by the uh Department of Health of Prince George's County. They are working now with uh the school system's uh health department to put together um RFPs. To go out and seek um healthcare providers that will provide additional uh community health services to students. Uh, primarily, um, as it expands, it may expand to family, but this is for students to ensure. Um, uh, that students are caught up on their uh shots, to ensure immunizations, to ensure a reduction of. Of, of chronic diseases. Uh, the theory behind it is if a certain community has a higher propensity of asthma. Can we put a provider in the school that can help the school address those um underlying conditions perhaps? That calls uh, you know, the high prevalence of asthma as well as, you know, keeping students out of school. Um, the idea is what can we do to ensure the, that health and safety of students as we go forward? Um, and then finally, um orchestra and uh choral rooms. Um, and so, so, you know, I, it, it is um a, a, a lot that we put into the schools. Uh, and excited a- about uh the students being to take advantage of all of that that's there. Um, as I mentioned before, with the maintenance, school maintenance program that begins uh on a day one uh with Honeywell. Uh, the way that it has been set up, each school will have a dedicated Honeywell um uh. Um, official or, or ma- it's called a rover, basically, that will be at the school weekly. Um, testing systems, looking at systems, et cetera. Um, the question has come up around what does that look like? Um, and so what that looks like is basically. Going forward for these six schools, if there is a work order, it does not go to PG CPS. It goes to Honeywell. Honeywell is responsible for responding uh to that work order and to closing out that work order. Within the contract, depending on where this issue resides, there are categories of highest. Which are academic core areas, which are the kitchens, which are the administrative areas. Where there are actually time limits that they are responsible to reply and to cure. And if they fail to do so within time period, we actually start charging them a fee. And so the idea is that we want the school to look uh beautiful. In year fifteen and year thirty that it does the day we open it. Um, and so they are also responsible for addressing uh vandalism, uh, any um. Uh, issues with the, the paving, uh, the sidewalks, they have grounds. Basically, anything in the building, if you were to flip it over and shake it, that doesn't come out, they're responsible for. So um, uh, kitchen equipment and, and installed, uh, the wiring, everything. And it's tied to a, a thirty-year maintenance program uh that uh, and quarterly they are assessed. Um, and their goal is to not have any deduction. Um, because the deduction is out of their, you know, their, their, their targeted revenue. Um, and so they will work in conjunction with our uh custodial staff. And so it is to su- it is to supplement, not replace. And so they will be there to provide best practices, ways to uh, to clean. Uh, but they will be responsible for maintaining uh the systems, uh, changing the filters, all of those things. Uh, we keep um snow removal, trash removal. Um, we also in grounds, where there is grass, we are responsible for uh the, the, the grounds. Uh, there are two schools, um Sonya Sotomayor and Hyattsville that have field turfs. They are, that is their responsibility as well. Um, so also any fencing, any of that, that is their responsibility as well. Um, and so, so we, you know, I'm not saying it's perfect. We haven't started it yet, so we will see as we start to roll this out. But the idea is to ensure that the administration and teachers are not focused on getting stuff fixed. And they're focused on the job at hand of educating our students. And it's our job to ensure that there is a, a, a robust system in place um to provide the asset necessary to do so. So what has come up too has been what exactly is going into the buildings because a lot of uh teachers, as you can imagine, are anxious. And uh, some that have some uh tenure here have acquired some very nice furniture. And so they are very, they want to make sure they know what they're getting before they give it up. Uh, but this is really, you know, encompassing of what we, what is part of the package, the package that will be delivered. Uh, on day one, we are totally fitting out the school with all FFNE on day one. We are not bringing uh furniture over from any of the older schools. Uh, the fixtures that will be in place, as I said before, will be the responsibility of, of Honeywell to maintain. Um, and then the equipment, we are, we have packaged all of that as part of this uh bundled approach as well. So from kitchen equipment to production studio equipment to steam lab equipment. As set forth in our technical and educational specifications, that is all part of the bundled uh package. As we go forward, PG CPS is responsible, should somebody tear up a desk, to replace a desk as we normally would. We also are responsible for updating the IT as that happens through the normal IT cycle of the school system. Uh, what we've installed um on day one is actually the smart board requirements that the IT department. Uh, has set for the following year. So we are not putting in anything that's outdated and has already been updated by our specifications. Uh, we have put in everything that is uh proactively or um proactively looking forward. Into where the school system wants to go. So as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, we still are holding with our three uh school occupancy dates. Um, July fifteenth, and when I say occupancy, the developer is required to have use and occupancy. Not substantial completion, not we almost there, it is use and occupancy that we get the keys on that day to start moving. Uh, we have a yeoman's effort this summer to move. We are, we, there's a lot going on and um I have politely and not so politely made it clear that. Uh, these schools have to be, and if you want to deliver them early, that is totally fine with us as well. Uh, but there's a lot predicated um on ensuring a delivery of these schools. Um, they are well aware, um, they understand uh the significance of, of these dates for us. Um, I can say that um even with, you know, um. Colin Powell and, and coming in in November, uh, we already have a man to ensure that, you know, uh. We are uh ready to go and FFNE is actually gonna start showing up there, I think in uh late August. Um, the furniture for all of these, I forgot to mention earlier, for all of the schools scheduled for summer delivery. Will start arriving May first. So if you drive by the schools and start seeing massive trucks parked outside and parked there. That is the school furniture and equipment starting to arrive. Um, and they will start fitting out every classroom. Uh, and then backing out, locking the door and uh get it ready for, for turnover. Uh, in mid-July. And so here are some photos to just kind of give you a sense of what's happening. Uh, the picture on the top left is the uh, the classroom, uh, one of the classrooms, uh, one of the schools. Uh, picture right below it are the learning stairs. This is at uh Colin Powell right now. But this is a distinctive feature of all of the schools. This is an opportunity for, you know, uh, teachers um uh to utilize this space. For uh, for collaborative learning. Also, it can be used by the performing arts. As a uh, as a uh choral stage, um, and it looks into the uh, the cafeteria. Um, and so, so they have uh installed those uh in the schools or, or are installing them. Uh, the picture to the top right is the installation of the artificial turf at Sonya Sotomayor. Uh, and so they have actually started laying the turf uh this week. Uh, this picture was last week. Now there are pieces of green that you can start to see out on the field. Um, the uh pictures below are just, uh, as you can see, that picture there is the awning at Drew Freeman. Uh, underneath uh the, the awning that's been put up. Um, that's the um, the, the front entrance way of the school. Uh, you can see the overhead ductwork uh that will be closed up um starting in the next couple of weeks. Uh, as they get um, um inspections finalized. And then the final picture here are just the lockers. So that, that's the hallway and those are the lockers that have been installed uh and uh work that is continuing. And then there's just another set of, of, of pictures here. Uh, the one on the far left top is the uh gymnasium, uh, I believe that is at um Hyattsville. Um, and they are actually spray painting the roof uh or the ceiling now. Uh, the uh, the bathroom, I think it's the next picture over in the right. And what is throughout the building are um to the right there are the solar tubes. That is uh set up to bring in natural light all the way down into the cavity of the school. Um, those are, are prominently displayed in both the collaboration areas and throughout uh the media center. Uh, middle of the campus. Um, the bottom left picture are the built-in bookshelves in the media center. So when you walk in, there will be built-in bookshelves um around uh the, the corridor. As well as the columns um that will allow for uh um access to, to books as well. Um, uh, as um anything else that the schools would like to, to have uh in those built-ins. Uh, the picture next to it is the view down into the uh media center. Uh, and that, I believe, is at um uh Walker Mill. Um, and you are on the second floor looking down into uh the media center. Uh, and then just some more construction work. The final picture is Hyattsville. Uh, that is uh the picture on the right, uh, well, the, the right side of the picture is the. Uh, parent drop-off and parking and student and parent and uh teacher parking. The one right to the left of it is the bus loop. The one right to the left of it is the bus loop that they've started to work on now. And far over to your far left is the field that they've started to put in place. So there's some aggressive work happening on the site. And those are some current pictures as of the last couple of weeks. Finally, because I know that this is also top of mind for board members. When we started this whole process a few years ago around the move and how extensive it was, we have selected for the blueprint schools, the same move vendor that we utilized through Gilbane before. They are under contract, they've already started working with all of the schools. We've had walkthroughs, schools have been directed and have ordered boxes. Roll-offs have come, the word of the month has been declutter. And declutter again, and declutter one more time. So, but you know, that is really what the focus of our efforts are right now. As I said before, we do not get occupancy of the schools until July fifteenth. We are literally planning to mobilize to start moving July fifteenth. So just so that we can get schools vacated as quickly as possible, if necessary cleaned. And then if there are subsequent schools coming in, to give them the opportunity to get moved in. The timeline for all of our moves is we, I have made it clear, we have to be done August fourteenth. So that first Monday, I believe, of in-service, we want to be done with all moving. The boxes are in the locations that they need to be in, there may be some unpacking that needs to happen. But we will not be disrupting the beginning of the educational year is our goal. And so that's, if that means we're working seven days a week to make that happen, that is our focus to ensure that we are out of the way as quickly as possible. Because there will be a lot to know and to learn for the schools. We also, and we'll be setting up trainings for the teachers and staff of the new school and the equipment that's in there and some of the things that we are excited that they know about. Like, you know, room, specific temperature control and some other things that I think that folks will really appreciate. So that is my update. Welcome any questions, any, anything from you all at this time.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Appreciate the presentation. I'll jump over to you first, Ms. Walker, and then I'll jump in after. You on mute? Sorry, you're still on mute, Ms. Walker?
While I was giving you kudos, I was on mute. But I was saying, thank you so much for that amazing presentation. I'm really excited at all the amazing work that's happening. Plus, one of the schools is in my district, so it gets me really, really excited to be able to be there. Listen, one of the things you said was, and I'm really excited about, is the focus around mental health and that you'll have. One, can you talk more about what that space is, if you know? And then the second piece that I wanted to talk about is, is there any specific art that is going to go throughout our schools? And if so, I see a yes, which I like. If there is, can you talk to me about if any of them are affirmations? Will they be spread throughout the school in bathrooms and things that are positive messages so that our scholars can have throughout the day?
So first, with the community health center, that will be a focus of the health department, figuring out what is the need for that community. And so I can tell you right now that every administration that I have is like, well, hey, look, if they don't want it, we can use this space as well. So it's fitted out to provide health services or wellness services as determined as the need exists within that community. Just to make sure that I say this because we, there has been some questions about it. This is a clinic that can only be accessed from external and outside of the school. There will be no ability to access inside the school from the clinic. So I know there was some concern about like, you know, the community access and, you know, security purposes. So we have actually ensured that the only way, we will have the only key to get into the clinic from the school side. But there will be no ability to access inside of the school through the clinic. They would have to go out, even students that go that are sick. They will have to go out and come back around through the main office. As it relates to art, we conducted a mural competition, then selected muralists. I would, I'm very proud to announce, I believe, three of the four are Prince George's County graduates, public school graduates and residents that have had work displayed around the country. So they have started to work with the school administrations. Their responsibilities are to have community meetings to come up with a mural theme that will, they will be prominently placed along the servary of the school. So there's a prominent place where they go. With that said, I was walking today with Elizabeth Whitehead from the visual arts team. And she started pointing out all of these other big massive walls that don't have anything on them and that they have already kind of targeted that will be next. And so, and so that will really be driven by the schools and school leadership. I know for sure, talking to, for instance, Principal Cribs, she wants to actually have, I guess there's some product where you can have stickers on the bottom of the steps. So like when you look up, like you can literally place them all. And so she wants to do that. And there, another principal wants to put up collegiate flags through the middle of the school. And so, so it really is, will be open. Our responsibility, quite honestly, with Honeywell is any place that is not covered, they have to paint. So they, you know, they'll be more than happy to let us put murals where we want to because there's less that they have to do. But what I've talked to Elizabeth about is possibly setting up some type of program where this is one of the few places where we can get community input into the school. And I really want to make sure that that's driven by the schools and that, you know, to the extent possible, they have that flexibility to do and add the affirmations and to do the things that they feel are appropriate for each school campus.
Thank you.
Ms. Mickens-Murray?
Thank you. I am excited about the quality of life that our students are going to experience with these schools. I have one question, and it may be boring, but it's going to be extremely important. Because we in a thirty-year partnership with the maintenance, what is the system oversight? What does that look like? And I know that you said the custodians would work with Honeywell. But I'm thinking if someone has to look at the entire picture of this entire program for this system, who does that? Who has that responsibility?
So that is my office's responsibility, and we are actively hiring a project manager now that will manage that system. The plan will be Honeywell is to provide PG CPS on July fifteenth, an annual maintenance, a five-year maintenance and a ten-year maintenance plan. We also have reported requirements to the state. And so the state is actually going to come by, they want to do a five-year analysis, basically. How are these systems performing with CIP systems? Like, is there any difference? What, you know, are there lessons learned? Are there things that we can take to apply across the state? And so those are the immediate steps. I could also say that within this contract, within years twenty through year twenty-five, they have to replace every system in the building. So every system that's there, from the HVAC to windows to pipes to everything, they have a asset management schedule that they are responsible for replacing and repairing. So that when we get the schools back, because that's also part of your question too, is like, hey, if they've been the only ones doing it for thirty years, what happens when we get it back? It has another fifteen years of useful life for the mechanical and the building has another thirty years of useful life.
Okay, so part of my question is, who does the monitoring? Because you must have checks and balances. So that is with your office and you will report out routinely to the board as to, okay.
Yeah, so that will be part of our quarterly report. There's a quarterly, and when I said the quarterly deductions, that's what it is. Like, they have for every month, they have forty-eight KPIs that they must meet. And so there will be a checklist. The PM that's hired, his or her job will be creating that list and creating. And so Dr. Fawcett, Dr. Coleman and a few other folks actually will have accounts. So we'll be able to go into Honeywell's system. And we'll be able to see, like, on this date, we had six open work orders, a week later, we had six. That's a failure. So it won't be any, we won't be depending on them to tell us how they're doing. We have open systems, that's a requirement of the contract, that we can get into all of their systems. And we can ensure that there is full compliance with the contract and providing the level of services that we require.
Thank you so much. This has been a thorough presentation. Thank you and your staff, Dr. Fawcett and everybody that was involved. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Harris.
Yeah, Dr. Fawcett has something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the community health centers will be separate from the regular school health. Ms. Washington said that even a sick kid would have to come around to the front, but that's, if a child happened to have, you know, had an appointment in the clinic with his parents, in order to go to school that day, he would then have to go to the front. But a child who gets like sick or ill during the regular school day would go to the regular nurse in our health room. So they're separate. I just wanted to clear that up so nobody thought that, you know, our kids during the school day had to go to that health clinic because they will not.
My apologies, yes, that is, so there's. Staffed nurses suite in each of the schools. And so Dr. Jones has become a friend to make sure that they have what they need in there, starting on day one, so.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. One question for me, and then I think we'll let you go here. We talk about Honeywell being the kind of the main point of contact when it comes to maintenance and taking the responsibility out of PG CPS's hands. I mean, we say it's their responsibility a lot. Does that, I guess throughout the conversation, I kind of see it almost as, it's not this, but like a landlord tenant type situation. And when they do make these, I guess, adjustments or repairs and things like that, is this like something that they front the cost for entirely? Or is it deductible, is it like a deductible from us based on the severity of the need? And the contract that we have with them, does that have the opportunity to change based on how often they're making repairs?
No. So, so regular routine maintenance issues that come up related to the building, that does not change our availability payment. And so, so it's locked in, that's their response, like, they're smart enough to have put that risk in their pricing. So that's, that's not a per charge or per occurrence that we're paying for. We would have charges if, for instance, they gave me the example, if we let the basketball courts stay open and Shaq showed up and started just destroying rims and destroy like fifteen of them. And then they would say, hey, you know, you know, this is a bit excessive. So because they have a life cycle plan. So they have a idea of how long systems are supposed to last and equipment is supposed to last before they replace it. And so if they believe that there's been excessive use or any of that stuff, but normal wear and tear, that does not impact at all. Further, while I say it's Honeywell's responsibility, it's our responsibility. Like, we have oversight, like, period. So if we drop the ball, I mean, and that's the reality. And so I think that's the biggest thing that I'm focused on as we move forward is ensuring that, you know, we have robust oversight into what's going on and that we are able to then decipher and provide that information to you all in the community in a digestible form. So like, you know, me showing up, talking about forty-eight KPIs and they only got forty-three. And no, that doesn't, where did they fail? Why did they fail? And how was it rectified? Like, that's the level that we need to get to. It's going to take a little bit of time because we got to work through putting together a process. But that's, you know, quite honestly, our responsibility. I'm excited that we have them here to help. But we are not going to see, you know, you just do what you need to do. And as long as it's not too big of a deal, we don't really care. That's not, that's not going to be their approach. And they've been doing this, you know, this model for thirty years. They're one of the few companies that is actually getting ready to turn schools back over. So they, so theoretically, our hope is that they've taken some lessons learned in that space, et cetera. And then the final thing, in the contract, there is what is known as a services period reserve account that they are responsible for maintaining each year. So that covers any vandalism, that covers any, anything that happens that, you know, they could theoretically say, oh, yeah, you owe me for this, et cetera. So I believe it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year that it must be maintained at. So if they don't use it a year, they don't need to add additional money. If they use a hundred thousand, they need to put back in a hundred thousand dollars. It is their responsibility, it's their replenishing fund. Over that amount, we then have a conversation. And so, and then that's when we start looking at, okay, is it, you know, lighting? Do we need to put more things in? Do we need to do more from a deterrent standpoint? But, you know, there's no, every time we call, there's a called-out fee or anything like that.
No, thank you. That answered one of my other questions. And just because of the contract space I come from, there's no, there's no contract awards based on performance for them.
No, no. So, yeah, that's usually tied to really energy performance. And if they are meeting, you know, excessive standards and from a sustainability or energy usage standpoint, that's not a component of this contract.
Okay. And last question for me, you mentioned weekly rovers that are going to be present within the school. I assume two things, one, I guess they're walking around and assessing the building for repairs and things of that nature. Two things, one, I assume part of this is going to be automated because of the systems that we're using. Some, I guess, diagnosis can be sent electronically. And the second thing is, the, what will be, I guess, repair from them is a combination of what they see and the maintenance tickets that that individual school has presented to them.
Yes. And so, so what the plan, the reason why, they're going to have three levels of, I guess, staffing. There's going to be a facilities manager, so the base will be at Colin Powell. So they're going to have a base of operations there where the facilities manager will reside. There will then be, for, depending on what they feel is the biggest focus that they need, like an HVAC expert or something that is there. Then there will be the six rovers that will be at each school. And when, say, rover is a misnomer because they're just there. Like, that's the school that they have responsibility for. What has been explained to me, the first couple of months, is really like getting to learn the school and the systems. Like, you know, are there little quirks in the system? Are there things that we can, that we start to understand with each system right now? So that we can create a baseline of which to ensure proper usage, compliance and maximum utilization for the technology that's there. But, you know, they, and then from there, they're then able to run the diagnostics, understand what, you know, the filters that need to be changed, et cetera. They, what we will talk about at a later date as we move forward with it is that there will be solar on these schools as well. So it'll be the complementary, you know, exercise of solar maintenance with Honeywell's maintenance and ensuring that there is no impact to either of those because they are vital, both vital to the school system. And so, so that's, that's how it's set up right now.
No, thank you for that clarification on the questions. I don't see any other hands up, so we'll let you off the hook here. We appreciate that presentation and thank you so much for your time, Mr. Washington, Dr. Fawcett and Dr. Coleman.
Thank you all so much.
All right, colleagues, we have come to the end of our agenda. I know we went just slightly over tonight, but it was good dialogue. We are so, so excited for these new schools that are going to be opening up. And we know Mr. Washington is keeping them, keeping them on track to make sure we get everything squared away. All right, so moving on to item, let's see, what's that for me, Dr. Miller?
I was just going to ask Mr. Washington to please give me a call because I received a report about the concern about the Colin Powell. And I just want to make sure you have access to it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, no problem. So item four point one, follow-up items, we don't have any follow-up items from our March fifteenth. Yep, no problem, so item four point one, follow-up items, we don't have any follow-up items from our March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Um, our next OBAFA meeting is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, May seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-three at five PM. So thank you so much for everyone for joining us today, thank you, Ms. Howe for your presentation, thank you. Again, Dr. Fawcett, Mr. Washington and and Dr. Coleman, thank you so much for your time. Um, and with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Howe and uh, Ms. Winston for, and Dr. Coleman for joining us today.
So it's been properly, properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone, meeting adjourned, have a great night, thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Dr. Harris, a quick question, who seconded the adjournment?
Madeline.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Have a good evening.
See ya.